I'd like to call the meeting to order, please. Uh, roll call.
Mayor Yanish.
Here.
Councilmember Reese.
Here.
Christensen.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Ahman.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Dockin.
Here.
Baggerly.
Here.
DeBleek.
Here.
Nine present, zero absent.
Could we all stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this point, do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda?
One thing, Mr. Mayor, Miss Lee, towards the end of the meeting.
I'm sorry?
Uh, could discuss an item at the end of the meeting?
Sure. Put you down for under Miss Lee.
I have one thing also.
Okay. And then, uh, do I hear a motion to move to, uh, to approve and accept the consent items?
So move.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve the consent items. Councilmembers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to pull, uh, the, uh, Utilities Commission minutes of May 9th and, uh, the accounts payable through May 11th.
Okay, with the, uh, exception of the Municipal Utilities Commission minutes of the May 9th and the accounts payable through May 11th, uh, but here a motion to, or we have a motion to approve those, ma'am? But those exceptions?
Yes.
Yeah, you have that. And that's just the motion? Uh, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, say no? Uh, would you like to discuss those items?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, on, uh, the Utilities Commission, I see that, uh, the Electrical Engineer, Mr. Hoppy, had presented a commission with an updated wind turbine report, and I was wondering if we couldn't maybe get that to the council also, so we could, uh, review it, maybe at a committee meeting or at a council meeting. Um, he said they accepted it for information only, but it's an updated report, uh, 16 months, so I would request that we, uh, see that report, if possible.
Okay.
And, uh, with that, I'd move to approve the Utilities Minutes.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve the Municipal Utilities Commission minutes. Uh, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, say no?
And then, under accounts payable, I, I see that we, uh, paid the City of Mankato a sum of money, little more than $24,000. Is that for credits?
Yes.
Uh, is that the last payment?
That should be our last one, now that our new plant is up and running.
Okay, thank you. With that, I'll move to approve the, uh, those minutes.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve the minutes of the accounts payable through May 11th, 2011. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, say no? Motion carries. For that, we'll move into the scheduled hearing, and, uh, I would like to open the hearing at this particular time. Holly, would you care to explain us what's going on?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, we are here for the 2011 Street and Other Improvements Assessment Hearing. There was a public hearing held on February 22nd that, for the improvement hearing, um, which explained the proposed improvements and estimated costs. Since then, we have prepared the plans and specs, sent the, uh, project out for bids, received those bids, and now we have the assessment costs to discuss. Again, this map is, should look familiar. This is our 2011, um, project areas. Again, this would exclude the 19th, um, addition that we had previously. That would be a separate hearing. Um, and it includes, again, one and a half miles of reconstruction and one and a half miles of overlay. This is the, uh, bid costs for each of the streets in our street program. The cost per foot for reconstruction, um, calculated to be $59.76 per lineal foot, and the overlay was $25.46 per lineal foot. The total project cost is 1.7, 1.8 million dollars approximately, with 987,000 approximately in assessments and 809,000 in city share. Here you can see the, go back, please. Thank you. Here you can see the history of our assessments from the past years, and there has been a slight increase, um, this year over last year's assessments due to bid prices. And, uh, after tonight's hearing, we would hope to award the bid, um, and begin construction in July, and with the final, substantially final completion date in November, meaning we would do the first course of the Tuminus, and then the final wear course would be done next spring. Again, here is the, uh, summary of the costs to be assessed and the overall project cost. And we missed that slide. Sorry. There you go. Sorry about that. And the schedule. Again, assessments, we'll get a reminder, the residents would get a reminder notice in September, and they have opportunities to pay, um, on or before October 31st or to do payments. And with that, I'm not going to go through each street unless there is questions. I do have slides for those streets, um, if questions do come up. So with that, I'll take questions.
At this particular moment, I would like to open up this public hearing to the public. If they have questions or concerns, please step up to the microphone and state your name and address.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Eric Sondheim, 901 Becker Avenue Southeast. Um, we received a notice on Farring Street, and I didn't notice Farring on the slide presentation right now. I was just wondering if that was a street that was a misprint that we received?
I'll address this to Holly.
If Farring Street is not included in our assessments, um, Kevin, could you maybe answer that question as far as, or why you noticed?
Did you get an assessment hearing, improvement hearing? Improvement hearing certainly would have gone out to tell you that there's construction going by. Are you on a corner?
We're on the corner of Becker and Farring.
And the legal address is?
901 Becker Avenue Southeast.
Okay, then, we assess on corner lots on the legal address side.
Okay.
And so that's...
So that's why, but it said Farring on the assessment or the, I don't, I guess I don't know what it was. I, I mean, the legal address that my mail sent to is 901 Becker Avenue Southeast.
Okay, that would be the assessable side, then.
Okay, okay, so that's...
What was your name? I missed it again.
Eric Sondheim. Okay, so that's, that's the reason why we received that. Okay, and then, um, my father-in-law was able to tell us that to pay this, we could put that on our, on our house payments? We just bought the house. Is that possible to do, and who would I talk to about that?
There's two options. One, to pay it in full by October 31st without interest. The other option is to take no action, and we will notify the county auditor that it'll be spread over 10 years with interest, uh, declining each year with the principal that goes down. And you actually take no action. He, uh, has the recording of your mortgage holder, and they notify the mortgage holder.
Aye, thank you. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Nancy Kapachik, and I live at 1310 Southeast Becker Avenue. My question for you guys is, why is Becker being resurfaced when there are so many other streets in town that need to be done first?
Becker Avenue project is an overlay project, so you consider, consider that more of a maintenance-type project. Typically, we do overlay projects every 10 to 15 years, so that the condition of the pavement doesn't deteriorate to a, uh, condition where it would need to be reconstructed. Becker Avenue was, uh, reconstructed in 1986, so it has had quite a life before we would need to do the overlay, but if we leave it go longer than doing it this year, then you would be faced with a potential reconstruction project, which would be more costly to the city and to the residents.
Um, have you ever considered that maybe the residents do not want it done because of the traffic-wise on that street has gotten so bad, and the racing of the streets? Because I'm up at 2 o'clock in the morning, and you'd be amazed how many people are racing down that street. And having it more bumpier slows them down. And I have daycare kids, so I'd rather have it bumpier, so people do go slower, because they even hit 40, 40, 45 miles an hour when they put those signs out. And the police department hasn't, no offense to the police department, but they haven't helped a whole lot with that. And you see them going down the road really fast at night, too, without lights on.
Well, I guess that would've, uh, been a, an improvement hearing question. Uh, this is, I, I don't really know how to answer that question, I guess, because, um, the project has been authorized for overlay, and we wouldn't want, for example, some of the other streets in town that we've had significant frost boils, or we've had to, you know, work in for a reconstruct because of the condition of the streets when it's kind of un, unprepared and unnoticed. So I think it's in the best interest of the residents to do the overlay, so that you aren't faced with a future reconstruction on that street.
Because there's lots of, you know, most fast things all over town are really bad.
Yes, there are.
And Becker's not that bad.
Can I just add something here?
Yes.
Is that, I think in other parts of town, without mentioning the parts of town and the, and the name of the town, or the name of the people involved, uh, other parts of the city have had tremendous, they turned it down, uh, years ago. Um, help me with this, Holly, if you can.
There was a, uh, there have been, um, on occasion where we have brought forward streets for reconstruction or overlay that have been petitioned by the residents to not be included in the, um, street program for that particular year. And then, down the road, they're faced with, like I said, a reconstruction which is more costly to them.
Substantially more expensive.
Yeah, the overlay cost is $25 a foot, and the reconstruct cost is 55, almost $56 a foot, so it's more than twice the cost to reconstruct. There's also some water main replacement included on the Becker Avenue project, which is coordinated with Municipal Utilities, where we up, upsize our water main from a four inch to an eight inch, so...
Thank you.
So they're going to be fixing, then, the water mains, like down by us, is that one area that gets flooded out really bad? Is that going to be taken care of then, too, or...
We are doing some storm sewer improvements as well, yes.
Okay, and they're going to do it straight, then, because now I have a drain pipe on top, and the water still goes around it, because it doesn't, it's too high up for the water to go into.
What was your address?
1310 Southeast Becker.
Okay, um, we are, uh, putting in some additional catch basins on Becker Avenue to pick up some of the additional drainage where we have seen some ponding.
Can you put bumps in it then, so people have to slow down with all these kids in the neighborhood? There are a lot of kids out there that run right out in the road.
We typically...
Further down from me, even. My kids don't, but, you know, further down they do.
We typically don't put speed bumps on, especially Becker Avenue, which is kind of one of our major thoroughfare roads, so...
And how can we stop the traffic from going so fast down that road and racing?
Well, we can have more of a police presence there, Mr. Mayor. There's a couple of things I'd want to point out. Uh, Holly had mentioned, uh, $55. The reconstruction, we don't want to mislead anyone, is actually $59.76. The other thing that might be helpful, that, uh, this whole issue of whether or not the, the project should be done was, uh, established during, as Holly mentioned, the improvement hearing about a month or so ago, and, and really, the focus of the meeting tonight is to, um, and the council has ordered those improvements, and we bid the contract.
We're stuck with it.
Well, pretty much, at this point.
Why can't you put sidewalks in for the handicap people who have to walk down the sidewalk and just about get hit? We got a handicap apartments down there, and there's no sidewalks for them to walk on. They have to be on the road, pushing their wheelchairs and just about get hit from people.
Well, I'd have to check the drawings, but generally, there are entrances at the end of the blocks.
The...
No, there's not. It's a field.
Where there are sidewalks on Becker Avenue and where there is sidewalk reconstruction, we are upgrading our crossings to ADA compliant.
So they will have sidewalks to walk on?
We won't be adding additional sidewalks, but we will upgrading the crossings where sidewalk is being repaired.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else, uh, in the public that would care to speak?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I hope this is on topic still. Um, I'm just wondering, uh, this is the only time we get to talk, really, and in regards to this resurfacing with the public works, the citizens don't get an opportunity to talk there, and I'm wondering if it's illegal, maybe Mick can tell me or Holly, to have a ongoing fund for street repairs, like we do the sewer charge now on our water bills of $4, which repairs the underground piping, so that the people aren't billed for that. Do you have a separate fund, like on your property taxes, to pay so much a foot, for lending your foot of your property, and have it billed up over how many years, and then when it's your turn to have your street repaired, it's taken care of, instead of all of a sudden, if you have a 150-foot lot, getting a bill for $5,000 or more? It's taken care of, because you built that fund up over years. And I'm just wondering if that isn't a more reasonable approach, or if it can be?
Well, first of all, uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council and the audience, um, we do have opportunities for people to, um, speak to this issue. That's why we have public hearings, both for the improvements...
I'm trying to do it now.
...and the assessments. Uh, your question about, um, having some sort of a dedicated source is really a policy issue that the council needs to wrestle with, and they have discussed it in the past. Does it make sense to have a general, a general citywide levy that would fund, um, street improvements? I don't know. I mean, that's for the elected officials to decide.
I've talked to a few people, and I'd rather pay $300 a year on my taxes, knowing my street's going to get taken care of later, than do instead of $4,000 when it did.
Policy issue again, and, and we do have some dedicated funding for street projects through our, um, uh, Community Investment Fund, although that's been pretty much depleted by the low-interest earnings over the last few years. And there are some monies that are, um, produced for street maintenance out of the levy, and we use those essentially for, uh, crack filling and seal coating.
So if not only, if you have a fund like that, then...
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, John.
Any other questions or concerns? Kevin, do you need to read, uh...
Nobody else is coming. I'll do that, sir. All right, uh, for the record, this is received. Needs to be read into the record from Doug Wacolski, co-owner with, uh, Lois Hamilton from Newcastle, Indiana. "I wish to appeal the assessment against parcel 95616090, Lot 1, Block 1, in the Parkview Estates, and parcel 956160080, Lot 8, Block 1 of Parkview Estates." "He did not wish to appeal another assessment on Lot 10, Block 1 in Parkview Estates, of which there is a house. The appeal is based on the following grounds: These two parcels, without buildings, were originally added to all the southernmost units of Parkview Estates for the purpose of limiting the number of living units to those in the original plan. Any construction on these parcels now would be subject to the architectural controls of a Parkview Estates Association Committee. While this committee may or may not allow construction, it would, if necessity, need to match existing structures, thus the owner would be very limited in the choice of a building. Two, these parcels are in close proximity to the railroad right-of-way and preclude construction of a desirable living unit. Three, the estimated market values of the parcels for determining real estate taxes are $3,500 and $3,900, respectively. The imposition of an assessment of $1,199.38 represents approximately 1/3 of their value, or a rate of 34% to 31%, respectively, while the lot holding the living unit, Lot 10 for him, is taxed at a rate of 1.7%. Obviously, lots 9 and 8 are not benefited by said improvement, nor is the assessment made in an equal and fair manner. If lots 9 and 8 were assessed at the same rate as Lot 10, the assessments would be 59.5 and 66.30, respectively, and no one would have to write an appeal." Again, that's all in Parkview Estates. That's the only letter I received to read into the record, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Are there any other questions or concerns from the public? At this point, I will close the public hearing. Go ahead, here, any motions? Discussion?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, if you refer to the executive summary, you'll see that there are potentially two actions for the council to consider tonight. One is, um, a resolution adopting the assessment rule, as it's been presented, and with the numbers that have been, uh, presented as well. And secondly, consideration of a resolution accepting the bid and, um, authorizing the mayor and administrator to enter into an agreement. Now, in the past, when we've had issues with the proposed assessments, we have oftentimes chosen to delay action on the, accepting the bid and awarding the contract pending the 30-day appeal period. Um, I don't sense that here tonight. I don't think that the objection that Kevin just read into the record would really, um, adversely impact the overall project. If we, uh, accept the bid and award the contract tonight, of course, we get, we jump-start the process by almost 30 days, and you know, you know, um, when we've waited in the past and haven't started until July, we, we really pushed the, the bad weather at the end of the construction season. So those are some things to consider in your deliberations. The Parkview Terrace question, um, the assessments are on the whole property, and they're saying because there is not a building on 9 and 10, is that what they're saying? That they don't think it should be assessed?
That's correct. Of the, of the phone calls I got, they were also over in this area, had some concerns, but that individual's not here tonight. And these, there are two owners. Technically, these buildings, they're split right down the middle of them, two owners in each one of those buildings. And then, the bare lots here, with its proximity to the railroad, are assessed in the $3,000 to $3,900 category for all of them, and, uh, that's his concern.
And the streets coming back to them are private?
Correct. There are 24 individual lots, excuse me, 26 individual lots in that plating, 24 housing units, and the two private drives are a lot by themselves. Of course, they're not accessible for the benefit of the streets, so, here, what we simply did is take the lineal footage from the east side to the west side and divided it by the 24 lots, because there's only, the only accessible ones, there are budding ones anyway, are the ones, uh, on the south side of the road. So, uh, the complaints came from the, uh, three, six bare lots to my office. Here officially is only two. These two bare lots right here are owned by Wacolskis. Well, they will benefit from it, so...
Okay, thank you. Thoughts about Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll, uh, introduce a resolution adopting the assessment rule.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to adopt the resolution, uh, I'm sorry, to adopt the assessment rule. Roll call.
Councilmember Reese.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Ahman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dockin.
Aye.
Baggerly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
Mr. Mayor, I would introduce the resolution accepting the bid and authorizing the mayor and city administrator enter an agreement on behalf of the city.
Second. A motion has been made and seconded to, uh, accept the bid and authorizing the mayor and city and administrator to, uh, enter into an agreement on behalf of the city. Roll call.
Discussion?
Discussion? I'm sorry, discussion.
Council officials? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think what we're doing on the, these 20, was it 26 lots, Kevin?
24.
24?
24.
I'm trying to think a, a more fair way to do it, and I can't. I think, I think what you did is right there. I, I, I don't know how else you do it, except divide it amongst all of them.
We considered what we thought were all the possible solu, uh, alternatives at our staff meeting today, too, and came to the conclusion that this was the fairest way to do it.
I, I think you're right on that. That was my only comment. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Ahman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dockin.
Aye.
Baggerly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
The motion carries. Uh, at this particular point, would like to, uh, is there anyone scheduled to, uh, open for him?
No, sir.
Is there anyone here that would care to speak? To open for him? At that point, we'll move on to the departmental report. Keith Calment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, city staff and citizens. Today, uh, tonight, I'd like to give a, the annual report for the Wilmer Fire Department, and I will apologize ahead of time on our format. For those of you watching at home on TV, uh, the format we use this year is not the correct format, and I was instructed by Dave on how to do it right next year, so, um, I did not instruct my staff properly, and I'll make sure that doesn't happen again next year, so... But as you know, uh, Wilmer is a paid-on-call fire department. Uh, we respond out of one central station, and our firefighters, uh, are activated by, by voice pager and respond on calls when they get called. The services that we provide are what we call a battalion call, or that's a call that is just for a car accident or something like that, and we only send a limited amount of resources to that particular call. We also do weather watch, which we've been doing for the last nine years, and then, uh, one thing I want to talk a little bit about tonight is our special teams. And you look in your report, and your report a little, will look a little bit different than what you see in the actual report that I'm giving you orally today, and if you have questions about the report, feel free to give me a call, uh, either in the office, or if you have questions at the end, I'll, uh, pause for those as well. But our specialty teams, our heat team is hazardous emergency materials team, and they respond on hazardous materials calls throughout the county. And, uh, very proud of this team. Uh, this year, uh, we had three of our individuals go for the certification level of technician at, uh, hazardous materials level, and, uh, we have not had hazardous materials technicians in Candyway County since Merrill Berklin left, uh, the fire department back in 1999. So this was a huge step forward, uh, for the department as a whole. Uh, those individuals are Frank Hanson, who's one of our deputy chiefs, Craig Baker, who's one of our lieutenants, the lieutenant on Company 9, and then also Jim Felk from the Spicer Fire Department, uh, also went to that certification training and testing, and, uh, they just recently completed that. that testing within the last year. It was a program that took them approximately a year to accomplish all of the testing. They had to go out to the cities for classes, we had classes here in Wilmer, and then their state certification testing was done by the state certification board, and we were, we are one of the only departments outstate that has people certified at that level. And then our technical rescue team, again, they continue to be comprised of individuals. Jim Larson, the captain of Company Seven, is in charge of that team, and he receives a lot of guidance from Jeff Gilbertson, the assistant chief. And those two teams worked together to buy a trailer that we sold one of our engines for, that was on a replacement cycle to be replaced. If we were to replace that engine, it would be about four hundred and forty thousand to four hundred and sixty thousand dollars. We comprised the equipment, moved it into an equipment van, and we're going to run those two teams out of vans rather than running them out of other pieces of equipment. So a big cost-saving measure, we can still provide the same service, only doing it more cost-effectively. And again, our specialty teams are a key piece to our involvement in a statewide response. As you see, our full-time staff is myself, Rick Johnson, and then Tara Begert. I'd be amiss if I didn't give kudos to Tara for the excellent work she does on putting this annual report together. I present it, but she does the work on putting it together, and the staff that I have is very talented, and I'm very blessed to have excellent employees. On your next page, you'll see the officers, again, our assistant chief, Jeff Gilbertson, deputy chief of operations, Frank Hanson, Galen Coystra served as our deputy chief of training, and he resigned on September twentieth of last year, and then those duties were picked up by our operations chief and assistant chief for the remainder of that year, and then those positions were filled the first part of this year. You'll notice that under our lieutenants, Chad Johnson served through July second, and then we had about a one-month break in there, and then Josh McGilvery picked up as lieutenant after that. Our firefighters, I guess I should probably catch up with my pictures here, huh?
You're doing a good job back there, Steve.
Okay, our firefighters, when you get to our firefighters, we're required to report to you our firefighters and our years of service. You'll notice there that Jeff Johnson is our longest-tenured employee with thirty-one years of service, and then we had six new firefighters that started this year. We started out with seven, and one of them was washed out through the training process. He had a change in jobs and wasn't able to continue, and that was Chris Rosen. We did have some changes of staff. Guillermo Alvarez left us after seven years, and Tim Johnston left us after a year to pursue a career in the military. Our message center continues to get a lot of use, although there was less use in two thousand and ten. We did some analysis of that at the end of the year, when we seen our numbers were down substantially. You'll see that in two thousand and nine, we had a hundred and seventy-three times that the public used that for messaging, and we only had a hundred and forty-five times all of two thousand and ten. Our numbers are back in that hundred and seventy to hundred and eighty range for this year moving forward. And again, our outdoor community message center is a, any community message that somebody wants to get out can get put on at the fire station. You fill out a form, contact Tara, or go on our website, and on our website, you actually have that form where you can fill it out. Our pre-plans for this year are listed. The Candy County Rescue Squad is a building that we took great interest in. Again, that was a building that we had a feeling that we could maybe have a joint agreement on that particular building, and the ambulance is currently located out of there, so when the ambulance relocated there along with their quarters for sleeping, we felt it was important to do a pre-plan of that particular building. So that's a very nice building, sits over on the east side of town. And then we also did John Supper Club in the east half of that block in the downtown area. The reason for that was we had a fire at quick tax return there, and also with the history of John Supper Club, we wanted to be prepared in case there was a problem there, based on council action that had happened on that building not being moved forward. It was interesting when we went in and did our pre-plans and made our firefighters aware of the hazards of that particular building and fighting that fire, so it put us in a very positive position in case there was another incident that would happen there, that our firefighters would be able to respond to that. Our firefighter training, last year, our firefighters attended over three thousand three hundred and fifty-four hours of training, and each of our rookies, each of the six rookies had to attend over a hundred and twenty hours of training. The reasons for that is that once our firefighters now come onboard, we run them through the firefighter one, firefighter two, and hazmat operations training right away, and so that training takes a lot more time than what we used to do. And some of you will probably remember back in the good old days, and when I started back in the fire service, basically, you showed up at the fire station, you put on your turnout gear, and you started answering the fire phone, and you started going on calls. Well, that's not the way it is anymore. And the hundred and twenty hours is in addition to their training that they do on a weekly basis. Again, the next couple pages for you will just be a breakdown of the trainings, and I've listed those for you so that you can see the trainings that our firefighters did attend. Our attendance requirements, again, firefighters are required to attend forty-five percent of all full department fire calls and seventy percent of all fire department trainings. Our chief officers continue to be high responders, of course, being around, and you'll see that the chief officers for fire calls made sixty-six percent of those, and then for training, actually Company Nine attended more of the training than the chief officers did this year, so there's a little bit of ribbing that's been going on about that, but eighty-eight point nine percent of the time, Company Nine firefighters were actually at their training. The next page is a page that we take some interest in and take a little bit of pride in again this year. Again, we've got very dedicated firefighters. As you guys are aware, we did have a reorganization when we had a number of firefighters that left us in two thousand and nine, and I'm pleased to report that tonight, last year, average firefighters on scene, or so actual firefighters actually out there doing the deal, we had ten firefighters in two thousand and ten, and that goes back to the two thousand and eight statistics, and I know that as council, you were concerned about that when we dropped our numbers from forty-five down to thirty-seven. How would that affect the actual response of firefighters to actual fire calls? And we had to go through that buildup phase again and bring our firefighters back up to the number of firefighters that we felt comfortable with, and I think that statistically, again, we are proving that it was a right decision to decrease that number of firefighters down to thirty-seven. We currently have an active staff of thirty-three today, but we are approved to that thirty-seven level, and we'll be evaluating whether to put more firefighters on or not. You'll see the total number of fire calls was three hundred and four versus three sixty-nine, and our average response time did go up a bit, and that's out-the-door time, it's from the time the pager goes off and the nine-in-one call is received until the first fire apparatus leaves the door. And you see that time is creeping up, and that's something we're watching as staff as well. One of the reasons for the decrease in the number of fire calls is that, again, some of the duct detectors, we're getting those moved over to trouble alarms, and then also on the water flows, and when we have repeat water flows, what we're doing is going out and meeting with those property owners and talking to them about ways that they can adjust their pressures and their time delays on their alarm systems, so that those surges in the water pressure system that is built into any fire protection system or water distribution system, so those don't cause a general alarm, and so those are picked up through the monitoring system and don't go into a general alarm. And again, that number of calls, the decrease in the number of calls, I know last year was the question, well, why did we go up so much? This year's probably the same question, why did you go down so much? Part of it we want to talk and think is public education, but in reality, it's probably the luck of the draw. We get our response areas, shows our response areas. We cover the city limits, Wilmer Township, and then portions of Dover Township. The substation that we were talking about on the north side of town would have improved that service up in the Dover Township area, but then we did not move forward that substation on the north side of town. Township calls, we had four calls in Dover Township, we had a snowmobile fire, brush grass fire, and two vehicle accidents. And then if you look at Wilmer Township, all three calls in Wilmer Township were actually for vehicle accidents, and that is a trend that we're seeing happen more often. The fire calls are going down, and the vehicle accidents are going up, and I guess that just means that people are doing a good job with the fire prevention. On mutual aid given, we gave mutual aid four separate times, and we received mutual aid seven times. On the incident types, we're not seeing a big change in the incident types. Again, false alarms are a big problem for us, thirty-four percent of our calls are false alarms. We try to do as much as we can on the false alarm side to get those to actual, either real alarms or get their alarm systems fixed. We have a couple of businesses that we deal with on a regular basis, and they know who they are. We call them frequent flyers, and they do get a bill after they get their five free false alarms. After that, they get charged two hundred and fifty dollars for each additional alarm. So we're trying to make that happen and trying to decrease the number of false alarms, because a false alarm keeps our firefighters at work, at their gainful employment, and keeps them in bed at night. Our large dollar loss fires, we had a house fire where we had a hundred thousand dollar loss, and then we had two other house fires with dollar loss, approximately fifty thousand dollars, and then we had the multiple garage fires on six twelve of two thousand and ten, and those fires were arson, and working with the local police department and the state fire marshal's office, we were able to deal with those young individuals and get them the help that they need. We did have an air handler fire over at West Central Steel, and that was a new piece of equipment that had been installed, and that caused a thirty-five thousand dollar loss in an air handling unit for them. So that was another big one. Our alarms by month, again, June, we had twenty-nine calls for service, and in August, we had thirty-one, and the busiest day of the week is fifty-five. So in June and July, if it's a Wednesday, the fire department's probably going to be busy. So alarms by hour, you see the alarms by hour, again, you see it around the cooking times of noon, and again, the cooking times again in the evening. So with that, I just want to tell you that your firefighters are well-trained, they respond quickly, and they know what they're doing, and we went through a transition period here where our firefighters, our numbers dropped down, but I think statistically, you'll see that our number of firefighters on actual fire scenes has went back to the numbers that we had pre the loss of our staff. We had our firefighter numbers back where we wanted them. We'll probably have to look at putting on some more people either later this year, first part of next year, but I think you've got a very good, capable fire department and a crew you can be very proud of, because I am very proud of everyone that serves on the fire department. And so we've got some great people. So with that, I'll pause for any questions.
Not a question, just a couple of comments, kind of echoing what you just got done saying. You know, we, I hope we don't take our firefighters for granted, because they are a good group of guys, very, very dedicated, guys and gals, very dedicated, and they are very much appreciated. And I want to make sure that you carry that back to them, that you do appreciate them. And false alarms, when I got on the council, I don't remember what the percentage was, we had the state hospital open, and it was a lot higher.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. We've done, we've done a number of things on false alarms to decrease that number, but thanks for those positive words, I'll get them back. Just a way that our firefighters are, an example, that they're actually seen statewide. We have one of our female firefighters, Joanne Plaster, was just selected for an award to get a all-expense-paid trip down to Texas to go to fire school down in Texas. There were two recipients, the state of Minnesota, there's over twenty thousand firefighters in the state of Minnesota, and one of them came out of Wilmer, Minnesota. So kudos to Joanne Plaster and all the hard work that she's done for our department, making it better, and she'll go down there and get some great training, so thanks for the positive words.
That's awesome. Councilman Docken?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, thank you for the good report.
Thank you.
Do you think we're adequately manned at the fire department, or do we need more firefighters?
I think our staffing level statistically proved that we're adequately staffed. We do use mutual aid more often than we did probably ten, fifteen years ago, but we now are managing our resources much more effectively, and at the level, staffing level of thirty-seven, which is where US council have set the new directive of where the staffing level of firefighters are, I feel very comfortable with that number. Currently, we're at thirty-three. We'll have to put on people either this fall or next spring to bring us up to that thirty-seven level again, but I think at the thirty-seven level, I think we can adequately protect the citizens, and we've always done a great job, and that's just by the dedication of the firefighters we have. We've got super people, they're well-trained, they're fast, they get the job done. You've got excellent people.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments for the chief? Thank you, chief, for a fine job and a great report.
Thank you.
If the chief hasn't told you, the sun always shines on Second Street West.
It does. Always a good day there.
We will move into the committee report for the labor relations. Steve, councilman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You met me fourth Wednesday. Item number one of the agenda, Mick Schmidt presented the information to the committee in attempt to clarify city policy, procedures and practices for the use of the city vehicles. Copies, the personnel policy and appropriate employment contract provisions will be forwarded to the council under separate cover. This matter was for information only, so we are reviewing that. Item number two was the committee reviewed the current vacancies and relationships to developments to the mayor's two thousand and twelve budget, and considerable time was spent on the issue of considering a cops grant to hire two additional police officers, but recognizing that the city must assume those financial obligations in the future, the committee decided not to proceed with that. That matter was for information. Item number three was the committee reviewed the information regarding the reclassification of one custodial position to that of custodian building maintenance. The position reevaluation resulted in a reclassification from grade one to grade three, representing an increase in compensation from twelve dollars and thirty, twelve dollars and thirty-two cents an hour to thirteen dollars and eleven cents per hour. A motion was made and seconded for the following, the recommendation was that the reclassification of the custodian building maintenance, maintenance position be upgraded to from grade one to grade three.
Second. A motion has been made and seconded to reclassify the custodian building maintenance positions from A, from a grade one to a grade three. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, say no. That motion carries.
Item number four, we announced the intent to close the meeting for a discussion of employment contract negotiations and bargaining, with bargaining groups. We opened the meeting and closed the meeting, and seeing there is no further business, we adjourned. I would move to file the minutes, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to file the minutes to the labor relations committee. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries. Finance committee report, councilman Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first item on our agenda was the public forum. John Sullivan again addressed the committee with concerns regarding employee use of city-owned vehicles. Second item was to approve Project one-one-oh-nine-b-two. Josh Helverson of Donahue and Associates reported to us that seven bids were received for the Orton Blad and Arby's lift station decommissioning and the Twenty-first Street Southwest Sewer extension project, number eleven-oh-nine-b-two. Donahue had estimated this project at three hundred and seventy-six thousand, six hundred and seventy-four dollars and forty cents, and recommended that the contract be awarded to the low bidder, Reiner Contracting Incorporated, in the amount of two hundred and eighty-seven thousand, four hundred and sixty-three dollars and seventy-five cents. Following this discussion, there was a motion made, seconded and passed, and I would introduce a resolution to award the contract for project number one-one-oh-nine-b-two to Reiner Contracting Incorporated in the amount of two hundred and eighty-seven thousand, four hundred and sixty-three dollars and seventy-five cents, and to authorize the mayor and city administrator to execute the agreement.
Second. A motion has been made and seconded to introduce a resolution to award the contract for project number eleven-oh-nine-b-two to Reiner Contracting Incorporated in the amount of two hundred and eighty-seven thousand, four hundred and sixty-three dollars and seventy-five cents, and to authorize the mayor and city administrator to execute the agreement. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Anderson.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Docken.
Aye.
Baggerty.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Christiansen.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
The third item on our agenda was a call for a bond hearing. Staff explained to us that the two thousand and eleven street improvement program has been approved by the council, and it's now required that a public hearing be held for a proposed bond issue, bond issue in the amount of one million, eight hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. To, unless- to, and this will help finance the program. Following discussion, there was a motion made, seconded and passed, and I would introduce a resolution calling for a public hearing to be held June 6th, 2011, at 7:02, for the 2011 street improvement program.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to introduce a resolution calling for the public hearing to be held June 6th, 2011, at 7:02 PM for the 2011 street improvement program. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Amen.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dokken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Tableek.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
Motion carries.
The next item has to do with the revolving loan fund designation. Finance Director Okens reported that the city has returned the original four hundred thousand dollar grant that we received from Deed, and that was for Wilmer Fabrication loan. Staff has recently been informed by Deed that the interest portion of the loan payments received from Wilmer Fabrication has no restrictions. Subsequently, staff is recommending that the mayor designate a purpose for those funds during the 2012 budget process. That was for information only. The next item had to do with an agricultural land lease. Staff reviewed with us a proposed agricultural land lease for right-of-way number five, and that's approximately six acres of land, and it's located in the northwest clear zone of the new airport. This lease would be for a period of four years at a hundred dollars a year with Byron Bloom as the leasing. Following discussion, there was a motion made, seconded and passed, and I would introduce a resolution authorizing the mayor and city administrator to execute the ag land lease for right-of, right-of-way five as presented.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to introduce a resolution authorizing the mayor and city administrator to execute the ag land lease for ROW five as presented. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Dokken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Tableek.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
Motion carries.
The next item has to do with a community center donation. Finance Director Okens informed us that AARP held their annual tax preparation service from February to April at the Wilmer Community Center. Since AARP does not accept payment for these services, they are requesting that donations they receive should be designated to the Wilmer Community Center for their general operation of the building. Following some discussion, there was a motion made, seconded and passed, and I would introduce a resolution accepting the donation totaling a hundred and forty-five dollars from AARP Tax Service and to send a letter to them in appreciation for their gift.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to introduce a resolution accepting the donation totaling a hundred and forty-five dollars from the AARP Tax Service and to send a letter of appreciation. Discussion. Councilman Dacken.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did mention at this meeting that after attending, it's not the senior citizens any longer, but that group, in 2009, there were about three hundred seniors that benefited from this service, but in 2010, it was over five hundred. So, it's a great service provided to, especially seniors. Thank you.
Roll call.
Councilmember Dokken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Tableek.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
Motion carries.
Final item on our agenda was some reports. We looked at the December 31st general fund, and we did spend some time looking at that. Then we looked at the April 30th local option sales tax, the April 30th convention of visitor bureau, and the April 30th RAC eight program reports. That was for information only. Unless there's questions, I would move to file these minutes.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to file the minutes of the finance committee report. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. From here, we'll move into the community development committee report. Councilman Dacken.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We met on May 12th. Item number one, public comments for information only. There were no public comments offered at this meeting. Item number two, neighborhood issues for information only. No one appeared to address any of the neighborhood issues that had been identified at a recent COPS meeting. About fourteen folks attended that COPS meeting. Staff, staff and the council will continue, will continue to be in contact with the public to stay on top of issues as they emerge. Item number three is Wilmer Municipal Utilities redevelopment plans for information only. Wilmer Municipal Utilities General Manager Bruce Gamm explained what the utility plans to do with facilities, expansion construction, following the recent land acquisition and street vacation. Their future plans include enclosing the coal pile and constructing a building for coal unloading, the storage of biomass fuel for the power plant, the expansion of the warehouse and storage facilities, and the construction of a new administration building. It was noted that not all of these activities are in the five-year capital improvement plan, as some are long-range projects. Mr. Gamm was asked to provide a site plan to be attached to the minutes, and I thought he was going to come, but we'll get him at the next meeting, Mr. Mayor. Item number four, Berg Fabricating purchase agreement. This is a motion. The committee reviewed a letter from BergFabricating requesting the termination of their purchase agreement for lots, Lot Five, Block Two, Wilmer Industrial Park, Third Edition. This property is in the terminal area at the former airport. The Berg letter included four conditions for the termination of the purchase agreement. Those conditions dealt with the return of earnest money, options on the airport property, and the current lease they have for the facilities. Following discussion, there was a motion, second, to offer the following recommendation, that the council terminate the purchase agreement with the following stipulations. One hundred percent of the earnest money shall be returned to BergFabricating. BergFabricating shall be granted an option to purchase Lot Five, Block Two, Wilmer Industrial Park, Third Edition, at the price established by the city if they, if the property is ultimately released and can be sold and reused. BergFabricating can continue to lease the land and buildings under their current lease until the lease is terminated by the city or by Berg. As per, per the lease terms, BergFabricating shall have the option to purchase Lot Four, Block Two, Wilmer Industrial Park at the price established by the city. And so, I will, I will, I will make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Second. A motion has been made and seconded to terminate the purchase agreement with stipulations from BergFabricating. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, item number five, Pro One Realty listing agreement, and this is a motion also. The committee reviewed a request by Tom Lindeman of Pro One Realty to extend the listing agreement for the former airport property. The request was being submitted because delays in the land release process have not allowed Pro One to market or promote the land for sale. Mr. Lindeman requested that the agreement be extended for three years and three months. It was a recommendation of staff that the listing be extended for a period of eighteen months, beginning at such a time that the land release is obtained. Following discussion, a motion was made by the, by council members and seconded for the following, to extend the listing agreement for the airport property with Pro One Realty for a period of eighteen months effective upon the release of the airport land. I'll make that motion.
Second. A motion has been made and seconded to extend the listing agreement for the airport property with Pro One Realty for a period of eighteen months effective upon the release of the airport land. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The motion carries.
Item number six, for information only, community cleanup. The committee continued its discussion of a possible citywide cleanup effort. This effort would be in addition to the, the staff sweep for zoning violations and response to citizen complaints. Mary Yanish told the committee of a conversation he had with Don Williamson of West Central Sanitation. Mr. Williamson estimated a cost of twenty-five thousand to forty thousand dollars if his company was to pick up trash throughout the neighborhoods on a one-day effort. The cost would be less if citizens could bring their trash and unwanted items to designated sites, and if the citizens share in the disposal. The committee discussed the options, costs, and means of paying for this service. Concern was expressed about hazardous materials and people relying on the city for their waste removal. It was decided to continue this discussion at the May 26, 2011 meeting. Various individuals will be invited to participate in the discussion, including representatives from the, from the Integration Collaborative, Mr. Williams, Williamson of West Central Sanitation, as well as the Public Works Director, for information only. Item number seven was updates for information only. Staff provided updates on the city zoning sweep, mobile home park cleanup efforts, the Mid-Central Research and Outreach Center, Wilmer Fabrication, and Bueller Job Z program, John Supper Club Building, and the former Terminal Building. The committee and staff discussed the problems with severing violation notices and citations. It was the recommendation of staff that the first round of the zoning sweep be completed to gauge what level of compliance can be voluntarily achieved. Once staff knows the results of the first round efforts, a plan can be put in place to deal with those persons that did not comply with city orders. Item number eight, this is a right-of-way dedication, and this is a resolution. Staff presented a proposal by the owners of the former Wilmer Fabrication property along Airport Drive to dedicate to the city that portion of Airport Drive fronting their property. Currently, a right-of-way easement exists for the road. Staff recommended that the council accept the, accept the dedication as it would be consistent with most of the other right-of-ways in Wilmer, which is held by dedication as opposed to, to an easement. Following, there was a motion and a second for the following recommendation, to adopt a resolution accepting the dedication of a right-of-way as proposed. Can I make that motion, or that motion for the resolution?
A motion has been made and seconded to adopt a resolution accepting the dedication of the right-of-way as proposed. Discussion. Councilman. Just a question, I don't know, Bruce wants to answer, or Mick, this must go back to the sixties. Why was, why was it done this way? Not, not being a right-of-way. I just, this surprises me that it was done that way.
I've been here a long time, but I wasn't working here in the sixties. I, I don't, I don't know the answer to that question. Maybe, maybe Bruce does.
Mary Yanish, councilmember Reese. I suspect it was because the property was split off from the original larger farm parcel, and the ownership was transferred prior to a plat being filed, and it was necessary at that time to protect the right-of-way through that area, and so the city was granted an easement, and then when the property around it was platted, everything else was dedicated as right-of-way in the plats.
Okay. Adequate. Thank you. Further discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Aye.
Tableek.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dokken.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays. Mr. Mayor, that was the last item, and unless there is more business, I would file the, I would move to file these minutes.
Second. A motion has been made and seconded to file the minutes of the community development committee. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. That motion carries. We'll move on to item thirteen, consideration of an ordinance amending the Wilmer Stingers baseball. Kevin, you want to explain that to us?
It's Mary Yanish, members of the council. We have brought this item before, seeking your opinion, allowing strong beer sales at Towne Stadium. The Minnesota Legislature has adopted legislation that would allow the owner of a baseball team, of a collegiate baseball team, to sell. Unfortunately, they never put the immediate date in the act and pursuant to state statute, then it defaults to August 1st. That law has been signed by the governor. That small detail, they have returned to the legislature seeking approval of, an act that would allow that to be immediate. That has passed the Senate and the House, not yet signed by the governor. But regardless of that activity, once that state law is fully in place, the city of Wilmer must adopt an ordinance that would allow that to happen. The selling of strong beer is simply a combination of a 3.2% malt liquor and then a wine license. They currently hold a 3.2% malt liquor license. If this ordinance is adopted, the hearing held on June 6th, then they will be able to combine the two licenses and sell the strong beer with the many selections that that offers during the ball, game. The season does start June 1, so our efforts here will be about five games behind, but they can live with that. So, it is staff's recommendation that we set a hearing to introduce this amending ordinance to allow the owners of a collegiate baseball team or any concession management contract to sell strong beer at Towne Stadium. And the hearing would be June 6th.
So, move.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to set the hearing date for the ordinance as stated for June 6th. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. We have a consideration of an RCO lease agreement. Holly, would you like to tell us about that?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The remote communications outlet and the backup emergency communications, as we refer to as the RCO equipment, is currently housed in the old airport terminal building and needs to be relocated for the better use by the pilots, and it is also in danger of failing due to the conditions in the place where it is located. FAA has proposed a lease and an agreement for installing the new equipment at the new airport terminal building site. The city has proposed to use the quiet lounge that is currently in the terminal building for the location of the RCO. The cost to the city would be anywhere from seven thousand to fifteen thousand dollars for the electrical work. The remaining part of the work, which would be the equipment and putting in the antennas, would be picked up by the FAA. So, we are requesting to approve the lease agreement and sign the contract to get the work done.
Thank you. I'll move staff's recommendation. Second. A motion has been made and seconded to approve the lease agreement and the signing of the contract for the RCO equipment. Discussion. Councilman Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This money will come out of the...
This money will come out of the airport budget somewhere?
Correct.
What is it going to come out of?
We have money in our airport operating budget, I believe it is, under maintenance of equipment.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question. I see this is a pretty lengthy contract. Has anyone read this?
Yes, the city attorney has reviewed the.
The city attorney has read the whole thing?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
And if I might add too to Councilmember Anderson's question, the FAA has indicated that once the land release has been completed, there may be a potential for us to go back to the aeronautics and ask for reimbursement for our portion of the cost through our grant monies that we get. So, that would also be an option.
I guess all we need to do is roll call. Councilmember DeBlee.
Hi.
Reese.
Hi.
Christensen.
Hi.
Anderson.
Hi.
Amen.
Hi.
Johnson.
Hi.
Dachin.
Hi.
Fagerly.
Hi.
Eight ayes, zero nays. The motion carries. At this point, we'll go into the announcement of the council committee meeting dates. Councilman Amen.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I just have one question. I didn't quite finish my discussion with Mick prior to the meeting, and my curiosity has the best of me. Mick, I still have a question for you or for Kevin or Holly, how the money appropriated or given to the city in lieu of a use of our roads during construction by the DOT on our roads, that currently goes into the payments that we do receive or the compensation we do receive, which is limited, I believe. Does that money go back into the general fund, or does that go back into our community investment fund?
That would not go into our community investment fund.
I'm wondering if it shouldn't.
Well, they're really, over all the years, there is not that much that we would get reimbursed for, for those kinds of detour uses. In the big picture, it's minimal.
Minimal under fifty thousand?
Oh, yeah. Not even close to that.
Not even close to that, more like ten. Well, I was just thinking, if there is some projects coming up, we're looking at the depleting our community investment fund, and we need to keep up our road maintenance, I thought that might be a source of revenue to set a policy to handle those funds if they should come up again in the near future, to go into the community investment fund rather than the general fund, because it is for reconstructing the streets. So, I thought that'd be more appropriate.
Now, most of what MINDA provides is in the way of street improvements. If there's heavy traffic on a detoured street for an extended period of time, and there's wear and tear or repair where it needed, they would do that at no cost to the city.
Yeah, that's in the contract somewhere. Thank you. That was the only question I had for consideration.
Councilman Amen, do you have a committee report?
Is committee going to meet?
I'm sorry.
No, no committee meeting.
No meeting?
No labor.
Councilman Anderson for the Finance Committee.
Finance Committee will meet Monday, the twenty-third, four forty-five.
Councilman Reese.
Public Works, Public Safety will be meeting Tuesday, the twenty-fourth, at four forty-five.
Twenty-fourth, at four forty-five. Councilman Dachin, Community and Development.
Community Development, May twenty-sixth, four forty-five. That's a Thursday.
We have several miscellaneous items. Councilman Amen. That was what you needed. Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes. Members of the council, it has been brought to my attention to remind you that at the last city council meeting, you tabled a municipal utility resolution, and under our rules and procedures, if you do not act on that tonight, it's automatically approved. If you'll recall, it was an issue dealing with the proposed increase in travel expense, meal allowances. Really, at this point, if the council had some issue with that, the only option available to you is to veto it and then try to set up a meeting with the municipal utility, which we haven't been able to do in this two-week period since the last council meeting.
Excuse me, did I hear you right, Mick, that this is the meal allowance and travel allowance?
Well, that's the way it was presented in the minutes, but I think it dealt specifically with meal allowances, increases in the meal allowances.
How does the council wish to handle it? Councilman Anderson.
You know, I was the one that brought it up. This is unfortunate. I think what we really wanted was a meeting so that we could understand why those rates went so high. They just seemed very, very high. I don't, I don't, rather than veto it, I would, I don't know. I'm very torn on that. I'm really disappointed that we've come to this point. I'm undecided.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I don't mind vetoing it and then sitting down and talking, they can always introduce it again. I think that's the proper thing to do here. It's concern of mine and citizens at large. So, it takes a motion. I would make the motion that we.
First, you wish to take it off the table, and then, if that motion passed, will you make a motion?
You read my mind.
He's right.
I'll make a motion to take that item off the table.
Second. A motion has been made and seconded to take the motion off the table, or to take off the table the.
Item.
Item regarding the travel allowance and the meal allowance of the municipal utilities. All those in favor? Any discussion first of all. Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mick, my understanding would be that the old rates would remain in effect, and we're just vetoing the rise to the new rates. Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Councilman Amen.
I had an opportunity to talk to one of the commissioners and asked him what the rationale was for the high increase of daily allowance for food, about, I believe, it was a hundred and thirty-five dollars maximum on a state. And I told him I disagreed with the philosophy that you have to eat, that's your responsibility. But he did express some concerns over compensation, and we don't pay the people on the utilities for their hard work, and there are good work that they do, and we're very appreciative of that. So, I think we're prudent to bring it back to committee and discuss it, and I think Ron's motion is right, and I support that.
Further discussion?
This is just to open the meeting, if I'm not mistaken.
Take it off, excuse me, take it off the table. That's all we're doing right now. All those in favor taking it off the table, that motion has been made and seconded, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. That motion carries.
Well, I'll continue with the motion. My motion will be to veto that item in the utilities commission minutes and all of that motion that we sit down and talk to them and understand, get a better understanding of why they want to raise it.
Second. Tell me again what the motion is, huh?
To veto it. To veto that resolution pertaining to increased meal allowances in the last utilities commission minutes and to sit down and talk to them and have them explain their reason for raising it.
Councilman Blee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know this issue, I discussed it with our utility manager after the action was taken, and we explained that it was a part of recommendation from their audit that they look at those rates and change them because they were exceeding what they initially had in their approved policy for certain individuals that traveled. I think this covered mainly the commission. I think it was unfortunate that it was not worded that way in the resolution that they brought forward to make the change of the rates. So, I think it's unfortunate they haven't been able to sit down and discuss it with them as well. So, I think it's proper that we would just go ahead with and veto the resolution and look forward to them bringing something back and discussing the issue.
Okay, a motion has been made and seconded to veto the resolution pertaining to the meal allowance and the travel allowance for the utilities. Discussion? Further discussion? Is this a resolution, Kevin? No, sir. But we need a roll call because we have to have five override. So, it's a roll call, actually. Councilmember Reese.
Hi.
Christensen.
Hi.
Anderson.
Hi.
Amen.
Hi.
Johnson.
Hi.
Dachin.
Hi.
Fagerly.
Hi.
DeBlee.
Hi.
Eight ayes, zero nays. That motion carries. Councilman Reese, did you have?
I had one thing, just a request to be excused from the June sixth council meeting.
That being said, anything further, miscellaneous? If not.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Councilman Dachin.
If I may. I wanted to just make a couple of brief comments about your prayer breakfast last Thursday, five days ago. It was a very large attendance. Mr. David Herser helped a lot on that. Pastor Bruce Schuman helped on that. There were many from the minority community that were there. Unfortunately, it did not appear, a story did not appear in our newspaper, and so, if you wouldn't mind, I think you should talk a little bit about the mayor's prayer breakfast, because I thought it was done very well.
Thank you very much. I will say this about that, is that the mayor's prayer breakfast had some controversy leading up to that, as some of you may be aware of. However, we did have a record turnout for the mayor's prayer breakfast, and which I found is very gratifying. But thank you for bringing that up, Councilman Dachin. I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, move. Second. A motion has been made and seconded to adjourn. We are adjourned.